Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, February 16, 2022. As a reminder, since we are in person, we must follow all of the guidelines that everyone would have seen at check-in on our agenda, including that all individuals must continue to wear masks while indoors on district property, and that we ask everyone to self-screen for COVID symptoms before coming in. If anyone has tossed, said yes to any of the COVID screening thing, they should not be on campus. We are returning from executive session where we discussed the employment history of four particular employees. We received legal advice and counsel from our school attorney, discussed matters related to the employment of a particular corporation, and matters related to a particular student. Mr. Russ with our name, agenda changes. Thank you. And no items requiring board action at this time?
So I do have a few comments this evening that I'd like to share with you at this time. I'd like to begin by welcoming Dave Lowery, who is the Executive Director from the Erie County Association of School Boards, and Jane Sullivan, who is the Program Service Manager. And so we wanted to thank them for being with us tonight, but also thank them for all the service that they do provide to not only our school districts, but all the school districts in Erie County. And so today they brought us this T-shirt and candy, and we're very grateful for that. And we also are grateful that you are able to endure going to all the board meetings of all the school districts that are within our county. So that is a huge undertaking, and we're really grateful and appreciative of all the work you do for us to keep us informed, not only at a local level, but all the information that is coming from the state on a very, very regular basis. And so, thank you for being here with us, and thank you for your excellent service. We're very much appreciative.
Thank you.
And so now what I'd like to do is, we're very excited to have some of our students and coaches with us this evening, and I'm going to tag-team this with Mr. Casselli. And so, today we are very excited to be here, to recognize our girls across country varsity, cross-country team, because they won the state championship as a team. And Amelia O'Leary is the individual state champion, which is just an incredible and amazing achievement. And so we're here to celebrate with them, and I'd also like to thank their coaches, Walt and Marty McGlaughlin, for the amazing job they do, not only this year, but every year with our students, and for recognizing them as being the Section 6 Coaches of the Year as well. So this team has just done amazing things, and we are so proud of their efforts. To win a state championship is no small feat. It takes hours and hours of training, commitment to the team, individual practicing, six and seven days a week sometimes. And so, we're just so grateful that you're here to celebrate with us, and we want to congratulate you on your incredible work. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Casselli, and then we have a presentation. I don't even know if I need this, but I'd like to congratulate these, both of our fine coaches and these amazing young women for their accomplishment this fall. And, you know, when you talk about working to be a champion, there's some things that have to go in, that there's some ingredients you have to throw in the mix to really become a champion. And this group of young women now, and those that have ran cross-country prior to them, have always demonstrated these three things that I've witnessed. First is commitment. You know, these student athletes achieve great accomplishments because they're flat-out committed to their cause. And, you know, it's every day at 8:00 AM in Hamlin Park when I see them, when I'm either headed to the gym or to the grocery store. And that's in July. You know, they are together at 8:00 AM in Hamlin Park every day, getting a workout in. There's not a lot of teams that can make that claim. It doesn't matter if there's rain, wind, cold, hot, they make no excuses. They're committed. They also demonstrate great character. You know, these student athletes, they have their academics in order. They go above and beyond the required expectations, like I just said, Hamlin Park, 8:00 AM in the summer. They pick each other up when they need support. Their character is excellent. And lastly, they're connected. You know, it's not often that you'll see a cross-country teammate walking the hall without another cross-country teammate. Not often you see a cross-country teammate sitting in the cafeteria without another cross-country teammate. They are connected, and that is maybe one of the most important ingredients to becoming champions. They're there for each other. Simply put, they're just awesome teammates. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to our 2021 New York State Public High School Athletic Association Girls State Champion Cross-Country Team and their coaches. First, I'd like to ask the coaches to come on up, and Mr. Russ, if you would join them at the table to present their certificates to them. I'd like to ask coaches Walt and Marty McGlaughlin to come on up. Let's give them a nice round of applause. In East Aurora, we've won 15 state championships in our history. 14 of them are cross-country, 10 on the girls' side and four on the boys' side. One of them is girls' basketball. And that just goes to show you how great we have it from a coaching perspective, and how much they get out of their athletes. We have one athlete who's not here tonight, that's Arrow Hess. She still deserves a nice round of applause. I'd like to ask Evelyn Hope to come on up and join her team, join your coaches. Let's give her a nice round of applause. Kalen Holton, come on up. Riley Hewn, come on up. Samantha Hewn, come on up. Megan McGlaughlin, come on up. Hope Owens, come on up. Catherine Shoneman, come on up. And your 2021 Class B New York State Individual Champion, Amelia O'Leary, come on up. Coach McGlaughlin, would you like to say a few words?
I'd love to.
Parents, come on up and take pictures, please.
Hold on, we're missing a couple of things here. I just want to say how proud I am of these young ladies, just how hard they worked all season. Like, those are kind of the norms, things we expect, but they stepped up. Chris was talking about the kids getting together at 8:00. Marty and I are with them. Now, they're doing what they need to do to become champions. And what made this year, I think even actually special, is they weren't ranked number one going in through Rivers, a super team, or the underdogs. Our girls really stepped up, really took a team effort. And it's actually quite rare for the winning team to have the number one individual. What an accomplishment for Amelia to beat the individual title. We talked about the team, and we really focused on the team, and there's extra pressure when you're in that number one spot. She really stepped up and ran the race of her life, and really led the team to that title. If you have time, just look online, it's on Miles, but maybe on YouTube as well, you can see her run race, really a perfect race, really set the stage for the rest of the team to win. Super accomplishment for her.
Just like to invite anybody else, we have some cupcakes and water for the girls. And anyone else would like to join us, please come on down. You know, cupcakes aren't probably on the diet, but... If you would, if you would, take whatever you want, and then if you would have a seat again, I'd like to show you one other thing. Okay? I'm going to talk while you take the cupcake. Families, if you want a cupcake, please come up and take one, there's plenty. We bought them for you as well. I wanted to show this to the girls, and I thought it was a good time to show. Mrs. Heckman, my amazing administrative assistant, has helped me throughout this entire school year, put together a Hall of Fame and a record board. It's going to go on a big screen in the hallway. As you know, if Coach McGlaughlin and Coach McGlaughlin keep acquiring hardware, we're running out of space down there. And we thought one of the best ways to go was to start to put things on a board. So what I'll show you is just a brief look here at some of the things you'll be able to find when you go to that board. For example, state individual champions. You'll go to that board, you'll click on, you'll see 2021, Amelia O'Leary, and there she is. Exactly where she finished, what her time was, you know, and who she beat. Okay, so if you ever see those girls again, Amelia, okay, you know what you're running against, all right? Some of the other things you'll see, all Western New York athletes. Now, if you click on all Western New York athletes, your girls' cross-country, okay? All right, you see a list of all Western New York athletes and their pictures throughout the years, as we navigate. Let's get there. Pictures are coming up a little slow. There's Marta. It's amazing how many there are. Okay? And we're still circling, this site is still in progress, but here we go, 2019, 20, 20, 2021, okay? And just goes to show the success they've had. I don't want to go on and on about this, but this will be, this is still under construction, and I know that Dennis has worked out the opportunity for us to get the mounting hardware and the screen. And so even if we run out of space for true hardware, everything will be etched in digital stone here for all the girls and all of our athletes as we move forward. And everyone will be able to see that as they come into our hallway now. So, thank you very much, coaches, athletes. Thank you so much for your commitment, your character, and being connected like you were. And again, one more round of applause, please. Again, I just want to say congratulations on behalf of the Board of Education. We're just so impressed with your commitment, and your performance is just outstanding. As Coach McGlaughlin said, to come back and to win when you're not ranked first is a huge challenge, and Amelia, as a ninth grader, it's just an amazing, incredible accomplishment that honestly does not happen. And so you should feel very proud of, for all of you, very proud of what you've accomplished. And again, thank you to Coach McGlaughlin and Coach McGlaughlin, and all the parents, because I know how much time and effort you put in to support your kids. Every time they're running, you're there for them, and that makes all the difference. So again, congratulations. And next, I'd like to just share something with you from the East Aurora Educational Foundation. The East Aurora Educational Foundation supports our district in many, many ways. They've provided nearly a million dollars in grants to support innovative programming throughout all of our schools. This year, well, every year they do the James Ford Commitment to Education Award in the Fall. This year, because of COVID, they had to do it, be innovative, as they always are, and they sponsored it to recognize the entire community, because we talked about all the struggles that we've been through, and it really took the community to get us through. And so they had a great celebration at the ice rink in town, and it was well-attended, as it usually is. And so from that, they decided that this year they would like to create a community project and recognize the community for all of their efforts. So they approached us about creating an outdoor classroom space on our Main Street campus. And so what you see on the screen right now, they've been working with architects who have volunteered their time to help us with the layout. And you can see in the middle of the trees, in the center of the screen, there is going to be a concrete space right there, thank you, that will be established right in front of the flagpole on the Main Street campus. There will also be benches and a table, so that the teachers can bring their students out and create an outdoor space. They do that right now. Many, many days, our students are outside with their teachers. They do instruction inside, they come out more independently. So this space will also lead right from the sidewalk, you can see there's a walkway right there, thank you, Mr. Rembrady, a walkway that will lead to the space. We're working with Bosse's, who are going to build the benches for us. So the students at Ornsby are going to be building the wood benches for us, and there are some few garden spaces as well that will be included. But we're very, very excited. We've been working with Mr. Brown, the middle school principal, on the design. And so we're very grateful, again, for their continued generosity to the school district. We know that this outdoor space will probably be used every day, and many times even in the winter. You know, our teachers are out there often, whenever they can be. So we just wanted to say thank you, we wanted to share this, the details with the board, I think you are aware, but we just received these drawings. And so we're very excited to see it come to fruition this spring, so it'll be up and running for the new school year. Any board members have any questions?
For sharing, that's going to be beautiful and really useful for everyone, so thank you to the East Aurora Educational Foundation for their continued generosity.
And they're going to devote this space to the community for their support of the school district. And so it'll be open when students are using it, for those people are over at Rosy's and want another space to sit down, they can come over and take a seat on the benches. So again, very grateful, we're very excited, I know it's going to be a great space for our kids. Any comments, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Russ. The Foundation Board was struggling with how to acknowledge an entire community. In the past, we've had a single recipient of this annual award, and how does one acknowledge the sacrifices of not only the school people and the students, but the entire community, the parents, the business people, everyone who had, who has had to struggle through the challenges associated with the last two years. And so this outdoor gathering space, which would be very useful to the school district during school hours, would also be very welcoming to the community in general at other times. And so, so this is a draft, this, the, everything is still in the phase, in the stages of being finalized. So we have some meetings scheduled with the Ornsby folks, and we're hopeful that they'll, they haven't seen this yet. We're hopeful that they will be able to do the work that we've discussed with them already. And, and this is a draft drawing, which is subject to change, so there could be some modifications. But we wanted to share with the Board of Education today, because you own the property. It shouldn't come as a surprise to you that something like this is in the planning stages. So, Mr. Russ and I will keep you posted as things finalize, as the, as the final drawings are completed, and as a schedule is developed for doing the actual work. Thank you.
And then finally, I just would like to address the mask mandate that we've been talking about, and Governor Gold has been speaking about over the last couple of weeks. I've been working with the other superintendents in the Erie Niagara School Superintendent's Association, and we've been in contact with her office in regard to express our concerns and desires to try to move forward, as soon as it's safe to do so. And we've also asked that she provides us with as much time, so that we can properly prepare for any transition that will be coming. I am hopeful, from the information that we have sent and received to her, that she will be making some decisions about that shortly after our winter break. So I wanted to let the board know, as we've done in the past, you know, we're going to follow that guidance, depending on how it goes, with the hope that we will eventually move towards a mask optional approach. So just wanted to let you know that we continue to share information with her, and we're hopeful that that will move forward. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Russ. We're moving on to board member comments. I have a couple things tonight. First, the Policy Committee meeting met last week, and we are moving forward with board, sorry, with board docs with the support of Erie One Bosse's. What that means as we transition from our current static policy to the more dynamic board docs is that we're going to have a two-pronged approach. So all approved policies that the board has reviewed will be in board docs, and we will have a table of contents indicating if the policy exists in board docs or in the current PDF form. Mr. Rembrady can help me out here if I go astray. We are going to continue to review the policies, but they're going to live in those two places. So we've already reviewed all the mandatory and controller-recommended policies, so those are going to be ready to go in board docs. And the second part of the committee work is a subcommittee of the District Policy Committee to review the Code of Conduct, and this will also be done with the help of Bosse's Policy Service. So the plan is to complete the review and then have the public hearing as soon as that is possible. Does anyone have any questions about the plan going forward? All right, we'll continue to meet as committee, and then we'll bring the policies back to you for review. But know when they go live, we're going to have to look in two places, using our new table of contents. Thank you. You should have all received a board evaluation form. Did everyone receive it and have a chance to review that? Yes, yes. Any questions or concerns? Then I think we'll move forward with that one. Could I ask that everyone please complete the evaluation, and then our plan will be to discuss it in our next executive session. Thank you. We all saw that the governor extended the emergency order, which allows us to have remote meetings through, I believe, mid-March at this point. And I wanted to talk, we've had a couple of things come up about remote meetings. I know that some folks think that we have remote meetings because we're scared of the public. We know that is not the reason, but we have a couple of issues on the table, one, of course, being the pandemic, and the others are requirements for masking and how it makes it a little trickier to communicate. The setup is a little more awkward for us, and we know that when we have remote meetings, we actually are more accessible with all the board members. We have one board member absent tonight who could have participated if we were in a remote meeting. So that being said, does anyone have any thoughts or comments off the top of your head? I know I've caught you off-guard, about whether or not we are remote, if it is still allowable for our next meeting? This is a spontaneous poll, and feel free to share any of your thoughts, remote or in person, if you have them ready. Fine, fine, with remote, okay. And we can also be flexible, as we have been, to figure out where we are at the time. Is anyone ill? Is anyone out of town? Okay. Thank you. It's still weather?
I was just going to say, as far as that question goes, so are we definitely going to go remote the next meeting, or we're just going to kind of play it by ear?
I would say we're playing it by ear at this point. I wanted to bring up all the factors for consideration. Point out that I believe we are able to go remote through March 16th, and I want all board members to, we're recognizing that we have a variety of factors that go into the consideration, whether or not we go remote.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
I find that. My first thing I wanted to mention was the musical this past weekend. I had the pleasure of attending the high school musical with Shrek this year, and it was incredible, another incredible production. So congratulations to all the students that were onstage, backstage, in the pit, costume crew, they did an incredible job. Special thanks to Mr. Cummins, Mr. Blackwell, Mrs. Casselli, Ms. Haley, Ms. Modgill, and Mr. Campoli. They all deserve huge thanks for all the time and what they put into the production. It really is a great show. So thank you. The Capitol Facilities meeting met on February 9th, and Mr. Brunson, Mr. Ballers, and I attended. The Capitol Outlay Projects, which, just a reminder, were the window ballast and the phone system upgrade in the middle school this year. They have now received full STD approval, and we are in the process of our purchase orders. The 2223 project, the recommendation is to continue with the phone upgrade, and that will start back at the high school for that project. At our last meeting, I mentioned that each building principal was going to review the building condition survey and prioritize what they consider to be most pressing for their buildings. So having completed this task, each principal discussed their building priorities, and Mr. Wicks discussed the priorities for the district. The next step is for Mr. Russ to meet with all the principals and Mr. Wicks and compare their lists of wants and needs to what was presented in the building condition survey. And Ms. George Buffalo Construction, and with our architects, are going to get numbers and start a land project. The plan still is to have a vote in December for the public. As far as the finances of this upcoming Capitol Facilities project, we need to have an $8 million project to balance out our debt service. Our capital reserves would add anywhere between 3.4 and 4.7 million to the project. So the total projected is between 10 and 13 million. Keep in mind, though, that if we wanted to do all the one through three-year remaining useful life items that were on the building condition survey, that would total 14.2 million. That does not include escalation or incidentals, so that obviously would be higher. So I just want, I thought it was very important for me to share with you, so you knew exactly where we stood with that. And we'll be meeting again in a couple weeks. And the last committee that I attended with Mrs. Daniel and Mrs. Mallett, who was the safety committee, and that was on last Thursday, February 10th. Middle School is in the process of updating all their first aid kits in the building. There has been an issue with Middle School, and in the morning, the cars, who dropped their, parents who dropped their kids off, the cars are trying to beat the light at the intersection, and they are flying, and hence a dangerous situation. So Mr. Brown's been in contact with the police department, and they are monitoring the situation, and will be providing extra support. Parked Out's still having a slight problem with coverage for rec and lunch, because as you know, we need double the coverage. So it's getting better, and hopefully it will continue to get better. They do a daily temperature check to see whether the kids can go outside for rec or not, and in the past, there's been some inaccuracies, because if you look at the weather in Buffalo, that may be a little different than East Aurora. So we now have a weather station at the high school, and the teachers have an app that links their phone, or their phone, to the weather station up here. So that's what, from this point on, we're going to be using as far as the temperature check goes. Gaggle went live in the beginning of January, and some conversations already have caused intervention by our counseling department. Anytime there is a warning, it goes to both the principal, vice principal, and the counselors. So that is definitely something that already in such a short time has proven effective. Annual fire inspection will take place this month, and the one long discussion we had at our safety meeting was about our safety plans, and it was determined that they are user-friendly and easy to read. The plan posted on the website is very general, and that's made to be rather general, because you don't want to have a person who has any thoughts of ill harm knowing exactly what our process is. The specific plan is extremely confidential, and I can assure you that each building's plan is 60 pages long. So it is very detailed, and it's very specific, but that has to stay confidential. Lieutenant Pat Walsh was at our meeting from the police department, and he confirmed that the current plan is in the police department's hands, and he also stated that he is in constant communication with our principals. Randy Taylor, who was a member of our East Aurora Emergency Management Team, he also was an attendance, he had no questions or concerns at all about our safety plan. Before our next safety committee meeting, each member will be reviewing the district-wide Safety Plan Self-Assessment and Planning Tool. And during the meeting, the assessment will be discussed, and feedback will be shared. An amendment to the district safety plan, developed in accordance with New York State legislation, has been added to our district safety plan, and it's posted already on our website, if anyone wants to look at that. And in March, I'll be attending a training called Emergency Planning for New York State Schools. Lastly, once again, for the eighth year in a row, we have received the Utica National Insurance School Safety Excellence Award, titanium with honors. And along with the award comes a $500 check. And that's all I have. Thank you.
This is all while I, I neglected to mention that the policy- I neglected to mention that the policy committee included Mr. Cassidy and Mrs. Daniel, so thank you both for your participation. Mrs. Miles?
Yes. Mrs. Daniel and Mrs. O'Whiler and myself attended virtually on February 9th a textbook review for three English textbooks, on 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, that Mrs. Lyons set up for us. And we had, we have reviewed these textbooks, and it was interesting, from my point of view, the 10th grade textbook in particular really seemed to hit hard on annotation and its uses, and also practice close reading, which is so important nowadays. Reading for understanding interpretation and style was touched on, a lot of work on thesis statement, values and highlights of interpretation. The 10th, the 11th grade, excuse me, textbook continued with the emphasis on close reading, which I liked, that continuation. It addressed a variety of ways to apply annotations to nonfiction, fiction, and poetry. And it addressed evidence-based arguments, which seem to be something that we all need to learn, to be a little more evidence-based. And it's certainly demanded by the regions, and the students need to be able to know how to do that. The 12th grade had a good addition for the AP and was spent time deconstructing essay prompts, which is so important. Overall, I came away with a sense that one of the things that really impressed me with all three was that they touched on New York State's requirements for diversity, equity, and inclusion. There was a lot of emphasis on evidence-based support, like I said, emphasis on annotation to support arguments, deconstructing of essay prompts is huge, and practice in writing. There was a good component of practice writing with it, which I was very impressed with. Further, Mrs. Lyons sent us a note that she is going to be doing some professional development with the English department in particular. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about the person that they're going to have come in and do this professional development. His name is Dr. Jevon D. Hunter. He's a PhD, English Language Arts gentleman. He's prepared to facilitate a half-day interactive professional development workshop to the ALA faculty at East Aurora High School on the effective integration of culturally relevant education in other asset-based instructional and curricular exemplars, and discuss what this work may mean for East Aurora High School classroom teachers and their students. This workshop will be informed by the most current and reputable evidence-based research and an asset-based instructional and curricular practices aligned with NICE's New York State Education Department's culturally responsive, sustaining framework and New York State Board of Regents' policy on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and adhere to the guidelines of professional organizations that govern pertinent content areas and relatable instructional practices. The thing that struck me about this not only is he incredibly well-qualified to do this professional development, but they're going, Mrs. Lyons is going to include, it's one of the questions that I had for her, that they're extending this vertically so that the 7 through 12 students or teachers will be involved in this. Great development. I thought they were wonderful looks. I'd almost like to sit in on the classes. Well done.
Mrs. Miles, Mr. Cassidy?
I have nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Flowers?
Probably hard to beat that. The, can we, okay?
Yep.
Regarding the Capitol Project, as a follow-up on this, this is all I would mention, process is moving forward, it's a clear process, which has been laid out for us, which is very helpful. The timeline is specific, project scope information is very comprehensive, but there's going to be an opportunity to fully explain the project scope to the public down the road. There's just a lot of options there for us. The architect we selected, I think, is a good fit for East Aurora, what we need to do for the Capitol Project was certainly engaging the community. I think we've got a real good opportunity there. So why I was directed for, thank you on that. I attended the Budget and Finance Committee meeting on February 3rd. Mr. Brunson and Mrs. Daniel were also in attendance. The minutes of the meeting are included in your budget notebook. In addition to those minutes, I'd like to note that the committee had a very good discussion about project or budget priorities for 22, 23, and beyond. Priorities that were discussed, among others, include tax relief as it relates to the tax cap, fair and equitable employee contract settlements, managing fund ballots, managing reserve funds, effective utilization of COVID relief funds, both in short term and long term, program enhancements to meet student needs, and staffing needs. Staffing needs was an interesting topic of the conversation. During the eight-year period of the gap elimination adjustment, frozen foundation aid, the untimely implementation of the task camp, and severe cuts in other state aid and categories for high-volts districts like East Aurora, staffing throughout our school district was reduced significantly. Thanks to some sound financial planning decisions on the district car, recent increases in state aid, taxpayer support, we've been able to bring some of the much-needed staff back to our community. What was an important part of our conversation on staffing priorities was not about getting back to previous staffing levels, but rather being strategic about hiring in a way that offers programming and support to address the post-COVID needs of our students, both in 22, 23, and beyond. And I thought that was a very important discussion we had. And then just finally, I'd like to thank the business administrator and the staff for putting together an agenda, supplying information to our lead, to our productive discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Flowers. Mr. Brunson?
Thank you, I have nothing tonight.
Thank you very much. Moving on to administrator comments, are there any administrators who would like to share something forward? Mr. Brown?
Good evening. Two brief items to share with you. First of all, last week, we had a very exciting evening, I believe it was week from tonight, where we had our first drama club production in person in two years. And it was just incredible, as our seventh and eighth grade drama club put on an incredible play. We also had some fifth and sixth graders join in, because we had to recruit, to just have enough people. But the great thing is our drama club, between fifth, sixth grade drama club and our seventh and eighth grade drama club, has over 50 participants, which is just incredible. And I can tell you, unfortunately, I was not able to come see Shrek, but based on the talents that I saw and the courage that I saw from our students at the middle school level to get up on stage, I think the high school will be in very good hands in the near future for any future musicals that they have. But it was just really nice to see the stage, our new curtain that the foundation purchased for us a few years ago, and the new lighting that was taken care of in the Capitol Project. It just, it was the first time that we got to see it in person, it was great, and parents were able to come as well. The other thing I would like to do is comment on our entrance, our entrance at the middle school. As you know, in the last Capitol Project, we made a lot of upgrades for safety, but also just the looks, the new main entrance with the overhang out front. It's just awesome. I enjoy standing outside every morning greeting the students a lot more this year, because I'm under the roof than I did in previous years. But it's just fantastic. And what we're focusing on now is making that space look great. We have a TV coming that will have all of our announcements on display. Mr. Walzhauser is working with his eighth grade students this semester to provide artwork out there. We have another art display, a 3D case that's going more near the lobby, that we're hoping will go in over this break. And also, I would like to thank Mr. Brunson and Mrs. O'Whiler, who spent a lot of time picking out some greenery and some beautiful trees that Mr. Brunson has donated to the middle school that goes in the entranceway next to the ramp. So the next time you are there, please take a look. You would be surprised at what that does and the impact that that has on the space. And we're just very excited to turn that space into a more beautiful welcoming space for both visitors, but especially for our students, because that's the most important thing. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Brown, and thank you, Mrs. O'Whiler, and Mr. Brunson. You can see those plants from across the street through the windows, and it is a really cool thing. Thank you for that.
Yeah, they're great. The, so I found them. I wondered whether we were going to be able to fly indoor plants this time of year. Very found this amazing place in Orchard Park.
Thank you both. It's fantastic. What a cool addition.
They're middle leaf.
Yeah, middle leaf big trees. We never heard of that before.
Way to bring the oxygen. Good for the brains.
Well, Mr. Russ is hoping that they will. I don't guarantee.
Any other administrators this evening like to? Miss Pantawa? Nope, just a hello. Thank you for being here. Moving on to community comments. Reminder that district residents who wish to speak during visitor comments portion of the Board of Education meeting were asked to fill out a comment card and deposit it in the visitor's comment box located outside the main entrance. Community comments, reminder, community comments period is not intended to be a discussion with the board or a question and answer session. The Board of Education will listen to the remarks and may or may not respond directly to the speaker. Board of Education will determine if a response from the board is warranted or if the matter should be directed to an appropriate administrator. Each speaker will be given three minutes and may not yield time to any other speaker, and more than three speakers will be permitted to speak, and the time limit is a maximum of 30 total. We ask that any speakers who had prepared written comments are encouraged to submit written comments to the board at boe@eaK12.org prior to the meeting. We do ask folks to please continue to use that boe@eaK12.org as an opportunity to communicate with board members. It's really fantastic to take the opportunity to read the comments that individuals make in a thoughtful manner when we're in a quiet place and can actually reread and digest properly. So thank you for those who do send messages by that means. We ask that individuals who participate in visitor comments period conduct themselves in a respectful manner, shouting out words through obscene language or any other conduct that interferes with the meeting will not be permitted. And in the unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and will return once order has been restored. All of that said, Mr. George Shoneman?
Like up here?
Over there, thanks.
Thank you. And this is my first time being here, so I hope that this is appropriate. To say that these are challenging times is a ludicrous understatement. Many of us are struggling to keep up with our daily life, our commitments to our children, et cetera. And then I look up on the stage, and I see people who, despite these incredible circumstances, have chosen to give back to their community. Rather than being satisfied with the reasonable response to the pandemic, turning one's focus on one's loved ones and one's self and health, you've dedicated yourselves to helping keep our kids safe and maintaining some kind of normalcy for them during these trying times. And for that, incredibly, you are often subjected to attacks and abuse. To you and to the administrators and the staff of the district, thank you and God bless you all. You're fantastic examples to us all. Even more to our children, you show them what it means to be an upstanding citizen and a steward to our great town of East Aurora. Thank you. And just as an aside, I also wanted to mention that Dr. Hunter is an amazing choice for that work that you're doing. We had him speak, it's something that I'm also associated with, and I'm really excited about East Aurora having that opportunity as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shoneman. Thank you for speaking and sharing your words. Danine Cole?
Good evening. On behalf of myself and East Aurora Guardians for Freedom, I want to express our appreciation that the board is moving forward with some positive changes and updates toward operation policies and the student code of conduct. We're very happy to see that. And in response to your discussion about in-person versus virtual, we're beating for, you know, next month, while the state of emergency is still in place, I just want to suggest that maybe you could consider holding the meeting in person, and if anybody were ill or had symptoms or had quarantine or whatever, they could attend virtually. There could be a screen, you know, so that every, all of you could still be in attendance. I've actually seen this done at a neighboring school district, one I went to a Board of Education meeting at another school district, and there was one board member who was attending remotely, while the rest of them were in here. Lastly, I just would like to revisit a question that we have asked that we still don't know an answer to. In addition to direct requests in writing and at Board of Education meetings, I have asked for a confirmation or denial that the school district hired a private investigator to investigate members of East Aurora Guardians for Freedom. Just wondering if your investigation into whether you hired a private investigator is complete, and if we can get an answer to that question or not. I think that we did submit a FOIL to try to ascertain documents, and we received a denial from the district to that request, saying that such documents are protected by attorney-client privilege. This actually would indicate to me that some such documents do exist, and that you do have an attorney helping you to manage an investigation. Again, we'd really just like to, well, actually, I'd like to just close that out by saying, if you do have a private investigator investigating us, we are all about being open and honest, and we have nothing to hide. So he could just, he, she, whoever, just send them our way, and we'd be happy to provide whatever information they're looking for. But basically, to close that out, we we find that this action is an intentional act of retaliation by the board to community members who want to speak out at community, during community comments, who just happen to not have the same views as you do on all issues. And we also think that this is a very secretive misuse of tax care bonds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cole. Moving on to item nine, reports and discussion items. Item A, Business Office Operations and Financial Reports. Ms. George?
Hi, good evening. The first thing I'd like to prize you of, today earlier, I attended an ASWOL joint business officials meeting. And we've received an update on where we think the state is going to go with foundation aid. Once the formula is fully implemented in 23, 24, ASWOL, the different groups that I attend, believe that the formula will run as intended going forward from that point. And they believe that nobody will lose money, but there will be a whole time line And they believe that nobody will lose money, but there will be a whole time loss minimum if you are losing enrollment. So that there would be a slight increase going forward from year to year. On our general fund, all our reports today are as of the end of December. As of the end of December, we had a little over $17 million in the bank and that ties to our, our cash flow report. I'm happy to say that our cash flow report looks very solid and consistent as it has been over the past few years. And we should be good with making it through the summer months without needing to borrow. As of the end of December, we had expended approximately 40% of our budget and we have received about 76% of our revenues. Moving on to the cafeteria fund, as you've heard me say in the past several months, this fund has been a little bit harder to track if we're making a profit or if we're operating in a deficit. We've been having issues with on timing in the end of, end of the month. Either with expenditures not matching up with the revenues or the revenues not matching up with the expenditures. So as of the end of December, it appears that we were operating in approximately a $60,000 positive. But I just caution that all the expenditures against that may not have come through until January. Our federal funds are operating as I would expect. We've received approximately 25% and expended about 25% of those, those funds. And lastly is the capital fund, which the only thing running through it is our capital outlay. And as Ms. Oiler said, we are very happy that it's finally made it through SED. And Mr. Wicks is working with our architects and our vendors on to schedule that work to be completed. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. And now Mr. Manbrady will pull over our monthly grade.
Good evening. We met just a short, I think, three weeks ago and there's not many changes to the grade. There's really only two things I want to highlight for you. Salaries and benefits continues to be a conservative number, again trending positive. We're still working on what exactly can fit into grants and what can't. And there's some ongoing hiring happening. So we feel very confident in that number and we only expect it to grow. But we're just kind of holding it there as we do some internal bookkeeping and accounting. Right here, let's see, supplies. Again, we seem to be doing under budget in supplies, so that looks good. The one I really want to call your attention to is what last month popped out as a $200,000 swing to the bad. But I told you that was offset by the BOSI's line below it and that was just us bringing some things back from BOSI's. Some of those encumbrances have been released and it seems even more in our favor. So instead of, you know, 200 to the bad, but 250 to the good, it's actually only 125 to the bad, but still 250 to the good. So that number continues to trend in a good direction. And that's just as we are kind of realizing exactly what we did by bringing some of those services back on campus. So that's working in a positive way. Everything else, you know, again, it's only been three weeks. There hasn't been much in terms of change. The other part that I do want to call your attention to is the new three lines below called the federal COVID received and spent. Again, the money is slowly trickling in. We had about $337,000 last we spoke. We've now gotten about $481,000. And we've gone from spending about 142 of that to about 207 of that. So, you know, they did not write us one big check for three plus million. It's slowly trickling in, you know, as the mail comes and we're spending it as well, making sure that we don't spend it before the check is cashed. But other than that, the rest of the numbers just continue on. There really hasn't been much in terms of change. We don't anticipate anything major. We did run a little more through technology at BOSI's. So we're going to eat into a little more of that savings there, but we also think as we've put out salaries and benefits and also realized some other savings, we don't anticipate any, definitely nothing to worry about. These are pretty conservative numbers unless something absolutely significant happens in terms of spending need. We don't seem to be in fear of either over expending the budget or underperforming in terms of revenue. We seem to be in a pretty, a nice spot. Let's call it that.
Thank you, Mr. Manbrady. You like a nice spot. Moving on to item B, career development and occupational studies curriculum review with Ms. Lyons.
Good evening. For those of you who in the audience who might be newer on the Board, every, every year we have curriculum reviews, but a certain department is up every five years. So every, this year it is our business department, our world languages department, and ELA of our offer review. So during our review year, they really take time to examine their curriculum, how it's going, what could use some improvements. And then they put together this presentation for the Board about their own programs, what's been going on the last five years. And then some highlights in their curriculum and with the students and then some areas of need and recommendation. So they really have worked diligently over the last several. We could be started in September or October, making this, making this presentation for you. And I'm going to turn it over to the department here and they will introduce themselves too and talk to you about our business program all the way from second grade up to 12th grade. Thank you so much for allowing us to take the time to talk and share about each of our special areas. As Ms. Lyons mentioned, we are through Parkdale, the middle school, and then up at the high school. So we have a lot to share and we're very excited to be here. So thank you. My name is Lisa Marchioli. I teach business at the high school. And just before I share a few things and allow everyone to introduce themselves, just for the sake of time and condensing this, I just wanted to mention that each of us brings background from business and industry, which we feel is very valuable to what we teach, why we teach it, and just some of the thoughts that go into how we present our curriculum. This is my 10th year teaching business education, my sixth year at, with East Aurora, up at the high school, as I mentioned. And I'm also the DACA advisor and I am the district leader for the current technical education through the curriculum department. And I also have the work-based learning internship certification required for the internship placements. At this time, we'll pass it on to Jen.
Hello, I'm Jen Parker. I'm dual certified business K through 12 and I taught business for the first eight years that I was in the district and five years ago transferred into the Family and Consumer Science Avenue. And so I am certified K through 12 for FACS as well. I also hold the coordinator for work-based learning extension. I do teach currently at the middle school six through eight FACS and I represent the Western North Region through NYSAPACE, which is the state organization for family and consumer science. And I also co-advice DACA with Matt Frankowski.
Hello, I'm Matt Frankowski. I'm in my second year here at East Aurora. I am certified to teach business K through 12. I currently teach grades five through eight in the middle school, business and computer applications. I am a middle school DACA advisor with Jen. My prior experience in industry was working at the University of Buffalo in their athletics department, as well as spent five years with the Buffalo Bills on their mobile ticketing and digital integration team. And I will pass it on to Colleen Kaminski.
Hello, I'm Colleen Kaminski. It's so nice to be here. Thank you very much for having us. I started my career in pre-press and printing and I was a department manager and tech services rep for 12 years. I traveled up and down the East Coast installing and training departments, I'm sorry, advertising departments for local, regional, and national accounts. I was also an adjunct professor of graphic design for seven years and switched careers to teaching. I'm elementary certified. And I have taught boost for seven years. And many of you might not know boost. Boost was an enrichment program for building on our students' talents and it involved technology, the curriculum for the students engaging that and including the technology as well as providing professional development for our teachers. After that, I taught third grade for 10 years and this year I am wearing two hats. I am teaching computer literacy for second, third, and fourth graders as well as STEAM for UPK kindergarten and first. And the STEAM program really involves the engineering design process, manipulatives and coding with robotics. And you'll hear more about computer literacy. Back over to Lisa.
So when we began with the presentation, we had to meet as a team quite often and we were challenged with coming up with what makes our department universal across K through 12. And we came up with these five pillars that you can see here that we incorporate at each level of what we do. So personal career exploration, the project-based learning, which you'll hear quite a bit about through our presentation, workplace developmental skills, even at a younger grade, exploring careers, learning what the expectations are, consumer awareness and financial preparation, digital and computer fluency. And ultimately, what our goal is, is to prepare students at each level for what's coming next. So at Parkdale, preparing them to be better prepared for the curriculum that they're expected at the middle school, then up to the high school, of course. And then beyond high school, preparing them to be, you know, working citizens, going off into that college pathway and having those skill sets that are needed to be successful. At this time, I would like to give it back to Colleen to talk about the Parkdale overview. Thank you.
So with Parkdale, we have a strong focus on keyboarding, Google applications. Those are covered in all three grades, second, third, and fourth. Our goal is to have those Google platforms trained consistently and appropriately, age level appropriately. We focus more on keyboarding in second and third grade. We also cover digital citizenship throughout. We are working to incorporate the new computer science and digital fluency learning standards. And they include what it means to be part of the digital community, private versus public spaces and information. And we also like to cover digital etiquette such as writing an email or a message within Google classroom. Some of the highlights this year was keyboarding without tears. It was a program that was purchased for us for the foundation of keyboarding for the students. It's really done a great job. It's really focused on the foundation of the finger placement and the students seem to be excelling with it. They are enjoying it. It covers subjects like math and science and ELA. So the kids are being exposed to more vocabulary and they're doing really, really well with it. Also, with regards to the skills, basically, we are starting from scratch. We start with how to turn your Chromebook on, how to turn it off, how to deal with a problem, what is a window, how to deal with a trackpad, how to move something, how to open something, how to highlight it. So we start from there and then we can, you know, we move up from there. Looking at Google skills, we'll show you in some slides. So there's just really just a lot to start with. And as you can see, we get more project-based as the grade levels and their skill levels increase. So we really like to have the kids apply what they've learned. You can see that we've also talked about the Chromebook etiquette, the skills. In third grade, we're trying to meet some of the teachers' requests with email and Kami, working with PDFs and editing. Our goal is to help prepare those kids for the state test. They're now taking them online. So our goal is to help them learn how to edit the text, learn how to draw those pictures on the screen if they, when they need to. And some of the highlights, you can see through the pictures, the top row really covers some of the early learning stages of the keyboarding without tears program. You can see how it's really forcing them to keep their fingers in the right place. They're learning the keys and the placement. Remember, these kids are still learning their alphabet and sentences. So these are really some basic skills. Down below, you can see some of the project base. It ranges from second grade to fourth grade. So the first picture was just the simple snowman. That's our second graders learning how to place a shape, how to manipulate a shape, how to use the handles, how does something turn, how to color it and place it where they want it to go. From there, we move into the third grade, which is the thankful turkey there. And they are giving more rules, more guidelines, more structure, and they're importing text. They're manipulating the text and that text is going to help them with their, their state test features. So we're just kind of getting their feet wet there. Then we move over to the fourth grade slide and we start incorporating many programs built together that work together. So the fourth graders, we started out with a video talking about many careers with the Macy's Day Parade and the engineers that are involved from costume designers all the way through all of the technical things that need to be done on computers. So they were exposed to many different careers. And then we talked about creating a balloon that we could have march through Main Street Parade. So we went to Google Draw. The kids drew their balloon for the parade. We then exported it. We imported it into Google Slides. We then started shifting it and making a mini, mini, sorry. No, mini stop motion. Sorry, a mini stop motion slide. So they had to manipulate it and move it over and over and over, some repetitiveness, so that they were able to really remember how these skills are applied. And they really did a great job. They were super excited with that. So that's it for Parkdale. I'm going to turn it over to Jen Parker.
Hello. So when I took over from business to the family and consumer science piece, I didn't realize I'd have to spend so much time telling people what family and consumer science was. People know it traditionally as home economics, home and careers, consumer life skills. Ultimately, what I want you to know in a nutshell is that it's really giving students, just like all CTE, they're taking their core content and they're applying it in all different facets to lead better lives, be career and work-ready, build strong family relationships, and make connections to their community. New York State in the past two years has implemented middle-level modules. So you'll see here on this slide. On the left are the themes. So those are themes that are present in all CTE curriculum and that all students benefit regardless of whatever path they're choosing. On the right, you'll see what's specific to family and consumer science, individual growth and life readiness, human development and relationships. Up here on textile production, environmental design, nutrition and wellness, and food systems and production. So what does that look like at the middle school level here at this, on this chart? FACS is part of what we call rotations at the middle school. So students rotate each year in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade between FACS, technology, and art. They get 10 weeks at the sixth grade level of FACS, 20 weeks in seventh grade, and 10 weeks in eighth grade. You can see that the career exploration piece and the culinary piece are two staples throughout each year and they kind of grow, build upon each other year to year. At the sixth grade level, we do address the apparel and textiles with some basic hand sewing repair skills. And in seventh grade, the sewing machine project, which in the past we've done things like donated pillowcases to Children's Hospital, an interdisciplinary project involving making a couch chair between FACS and technology. And then just this year, we've been covers for the Chromebooks. And it's interesting how much the students enjoy working on the sewing machines and taking a project from very beginning stages all the way through the end. Since FACS is 20 weeks in seventh grade, that's where I incorporate the human growth and development where we talk a little bit about families' role in society, parenting responsibilities, the child development piece, the babysitting piece. At the eighth grade level, the addition, there is actually quite new for FACS area, the sustainability piece. And I'll be incorporating an upcycling, repurposing project in that grade level this year. Because the career exploration piece is a really big part of my class and honestly, what I think all educators are working towards is helping to prepare students for what they need to do when they leave school. You can see where I focus in the different grade levels. At the middle school level, we have implemented a program this year. It's called Zello. We were prior using a program called Career Cruising. And so Zello is kind of like the new improved Career Cruising. And so you'll see at each grade level, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, there are specific lessons within the program for students to use. At the sixth grade level, there's a really big focus on getting to know themselves, their values, their favorite subjects, and how that connects. We explore the 16 career clusters. They explore careers within their own families. In seventh grade, there's a lot of assessments that they take within the Zello program to kind of match them up, to clear career clusters, some specific jobs. some specific jobs or areas that they might be interested in. And then at the eighth grade level, there's really the focus on transitioning to the high school. The counselors just came into my class to talk about course selection this year and what they need to do to start preparing for that. And I really feel very passionate about the career exploration piece. As a student that made it all the way to her senior year and picked her first college based on where my friends were going, I feel very passionate about students really exploring this from a very early age. So that by the time they get to that point where they have to make some of those choices, they feel prepared. And I do think it's important to note that in the program, I never really expect them to pick a career. It's all about what are the tools, what do I need to look at? I need to look at what I like, what I dislike, my favorite subjects, what my personality style is, what lifestyle I see for myself. And so it's a focus on the checklist of things that I need to evaluate to hopefully make some good choices. I just put together a little video here that has some photos and snapshots of some of the projects and things that we've done. There was some background music. And some of the photos are obviously pre-COVID. Ultimately, thank you for your support. I hope you learned a little bit about what's going on in the FACS classroom. Just one last thing to note, everyone in this room goes to restaurants. They eat, they interact with their family and children. They manage their finances, they shop, they wear clothes, they navigate personal relationships, family relationships. They organize their home, and I can go on and on and on. And that's why FACS continues to be an important class for students to take. And... Nope, just going to play it again. Okay, there we go. All right. So just to touch upon an extracurricular middle school, DAKA. Matt Francoski and I co-advice DAKA as well. It's a business and marketing club. Our current activity is what we've been working on very diligently and we're really excited about is developing a business plan for what the students have creatively named the Brew Devil Leverage Cart, which will operate for teachers every Friday. And we're doing this in partnership with Nina Theobald's class. So DAKA is going to be responsible for managing the business piece of it, buying what we need, analyzing the customer. And then Nina's class is going to be taking the cart throughout the building, making the beverages, delivering them to teachers. And then Tech Club is also getting involved to design the cart that'll go around the building. We also do activities like stock market game challenges. We have a business etiquette dinner planned for the spring with our speaker. And then since there's a pretty strong interest in coding, we have someone coming in to speak about coding and do some activities in that avenue. So without further ado, here's Matt Francoski to talk a little bit more about business.
Thank you, Jen. Well, hello again. I'm Matt Francoski. I'm going to be talking about the middle school business program. We've worked really hard to really coordinate with Jen and Lisa and Colleen to not only touch on these pillars, but really expand on them and ultimately create a cohesive curriculum that puts these skills into place, and then we can build upon them as they grow. So at the middle school level, the business program covers grades five, seven, and eight. Fifth grade is for 20 weeks, seventh grade for 10, and eighth grade for 10 weeks. At the fifth grade level, we really have a big focus on keyboarding skills, kind of progressing all those skills that are being used at the Parkdale level, including Google Classroom and email etiquette. And then a really, really big focus on Google applications, Google Docs, Google Slides, and soft skills such as presentation skills. For the seventh grade, which runs for 10 weeks, we have a big digital literacy focus that includes online safety, cybersecurity, navigating sources, online citations, and your digital footprint, which, as we know, follows students along for pretty much the rest of their life. At the eighth grade level, we have a pretty major focus on Google Sheets, implementing the use of it in cross-curriculum in math and in science, as well as marketing and advertising. That culminates with DAKA scenarios where students get to kind of act out and take a look at some real-life situations and think ethically about what they might do in that situation or what was done and what could have been done differently. Some of our curriculum highlights, two of the pillars that I chose to focus on were project-based learning and digital computer-based literacy. Project-based learning is really coming to the forefront, especially when it comes to high school and college-level education, being able to apply real-life skills, not just on a test or on a quiz, but in real life in practice. As well as computer-based literacy, obviously, with the times we are in, it becomes a necessity. But being able to develop those skills at such a young age only helps students as they get to grow and grow accustomed to taking those exams and utilizing those applications all the way throughout their academic and ultimately work careers. Here are a couple of our department highlights. On the left is the eighth graders utilizing Google Sheets to create a Battleship game to practice self-referencing and use some of their creativity to apply some of those skills. In the center is a seventh-grade project where seventh graders are tasked with creating a product to solve a world problem. So as you can see, the one on top, student created a safer and faster biodegrading Styrofoam in order to help with a recycling effort that would better help the world. And at the bottom, a nonslip utensil group specifically for people that are experiencing tremors from Parkinson's in a way to make their lives easier with a terrible disease. On the right is an example of fifth-grade work, where fifth-grade students are tasked with creating a brochure of a hero or someone who provides them inspiration. What's unique about this brochure is it has to be completed in Google Slides. So students have to create a slide or like a PowerPoint and utilize those skills that they've learned to create an actual foldable, real-life brochure of someone who is an inspiration to them. So I want to thank you for your time, and I will pass it to Lisa Marpul. Again, thank you.
So you made it. We're at the high school. This overview is just a quick, like a quick overview of what classes are offered up at the high school. I teach a multitude, a variety. Some are very career-focused, and some are very business-focused. These classes are available for any student that wishes to take and participate as part of their course requirements throughout high school. The way that some of these classes have shaped into is based on need. What are colleges needing from the students? You know, what classes are necessary for them to be prepared? Some of the classes are such as project management, which is potentially a newer class that I took too that haven't really been able to be offered, and created something that is a little bit new, up-and-coming. Project management is a skill set that shows up on a lot of potential job opportunities for students. So again, just really tying it back into a class that's going to allow them to have a lot of independent projects that they can have that ownership piece, but ultimately incorporate these very, very, very important skill sets that they will be able to take with them. Over to the, I'm trying to think, is it your left or my right? So the left hand here, the Business Administration Academy. This is basically an opportunity for students who probably are a little bit more set into a business pathway where there is a course sequence required. They have the opportunity to take SUNY-level college credit courses. There's a lot of network experiences, the opportunity, of course, to participate in DAKA. We do have that up at the high school as well. And Capstone with an internship opportunity where they go out into the community to experience a career. Ultimately, there is a New York State graduation credential, which I will highlight in a later slide. But that is an opportunity that students that, again, are very business-driven could participate in. Just a couple curriculum highlights, based on those pillars. Again, just the authentic experiences, students having the opportunity to interact with people from the community. And we are so fortunate that we live in this community that is so eager to help and support and give their time to make a difference in our students' lives. So doing things like the mock interview, where the students actually have to put all the working pieces, dressing for success, the resumes that we create, cover letters, being prepared with their file folder to actually go and conduct an interview with a business professional has been definitely a highlight of a career financial management course. Students have participated in Shark Tank business, like business plan reviews. So they've gone through the steps of creating their business idea, going through what they would need to create for a business plan, how you would have to present that to a bank, for example, for a loan. They have the opportunity of presenting that to, again, people who are in business, who have either done this firsthand, and they get this authentic response and reflection from those people in industry. The field trips, educational foundation, PTO grants, they have really allowed our students to participate in some once-in-a-lifetime opportunities. Moving forward, the digital academic programs. We live in the digital age. Students love simulations. They love to be able to actually tinker and see the realism of what things are working and how they're working. So I do thank you for typically always supporting anything that we have put, you know, again, as a request. Sendage for my accounting course has been a game changer. Accounting can be a bit dry if you're using a typical textbook. Moving it to an online platform, it really allows the student learners to be able to learn at their own pace and being able to challenge themselves with a different set of skill sets if they're capable of doing so. And there's self-checks built in, so it's really a fantastic program. I utilize a few others. Bonzai is actually through the Great Erie Federal Credit Union. It's a financial literacy program that allows students to get an idea of online banking, online bill pay, which, again, teaching the students, you know, something that they have on their phones, but teaching them in this effective way, how to make sure that they're doing that better, is a really great thing. A new program I'm excited to get started with, it just came about. So I haven't quite piloted it yet, but I have a great group of marketing students I'm excited to use it with. Stu Kent is a social media marketing program web-based that the students will be able to actually create based on the simulation, posts for social media in this simulation environment, again. And then after the simulation runs, it ultimately will show them what kind of revenue is generated based on those likes and the reposts and the shares. So all the stuff that these students are, they do, but they don't actually see sort of that dollar effect that businesses are eating from it. So again, this is something new that I'm very glad and excited, and thank you again for supporting all of that. We also have SUNY Erie College Credit. So there are three classes listed there that the students can opt into paying for the SUNY Erie College Credit if they want. The coolest thing about this is that there is no extra work. The class is approved as college-level. It's just if they want to participate in that extra fee, ultimately, if they know they're college-bound, and that's something that would benefit them. And they are quick transferable to a lot of private schools as well. So that's been a nice opportunity. And then the New York State Career Technical Education Graduation Endorsement. That's the sequence of business courses that I was mentioning earlier. And ultimately, that is a New York State program that basically deems these students vetted as employable, that they've gone through this sequence, they are ready to walk out the door to really be a successful person in that industry, in that professional setting. So that's something that the group has worked on updating in the last few years. And at this time, I do have a video. Is it possible to turn this on now? Is that...
Don't know if the TV's turned on.
Oh, okay, that's okay. You know, it's just, no worries. Maybe I'll just, I think it was muted. I think it was muted. It doesn't anything, anything crazy. There was just some music. It just adds a little extra. Okay, no problem. If it doesn't work, it's no problem. So just a little insight of what happens in the business classrooms up at the high school, some of the field trips that we've been on. Again, some are pre-COVID, so obviously, you know, no masks, things like that. So enjoy. So at this time, we're just going to take just a few moments to wrap up just some recommendations that each of the schools has for you. Thank you. And starting with Parkdale.
So for recommendations for Parkdale, the biggest one that we have is really asking for computer literacy to be brought down to kindergarten and first grade as well. The students are now receiving Chromebooks in kindergarten, so they have them. And our standards are now K through 12. So we would like to be able to meet those standards and start building on some of those skills earlier rather than second grade, especially because we're working with digital online testing for third and fourth graders. The earlier we can start with the kids and their Chromebooks and some of those basic skills, the more practice we could get in for those skills that the kids need to work with those online testing. The second would be a coding software program. Number one, the students love it. We start with coding with robots in the STEAM program, which is a different program than computer literacy. But we start there, and it's great because it's like little buttons the kids can press it. They can make the little robot move, which is wonderful. But then we move into coding, which would be more block-like coding, like Scratch. And having that coding software on their Chromebooks and able to create a project with it and feel some accomplishment with that would be wonderful, and we would love to do that. So we are currently investigating what software package would be beneficial to us or if there's something online. I've been working with the tech department and Dennis. And we currently have a meeting set up to look at the software and see if it meets our safety requirements for edLAW 2D and see if it's feasible for us. An add-on, a last-minute add-on, would be an additional keyboarding software package. I'm looking at an option for something like K through 2, and if we are able to get the kindergarten-grade one. And then 3 and 4, something different for them. Keyboarding Without Tears is wonderful, but we're trying to figure out what is the best fit for the younger kids and the older kids. There's a big difference between kindergartners and fourth graders. and fourth graders and what they can do and what they enjoy working on. So right now, the fourth graders are feeling this is a little repetitive. It's, you know, it's the same format. It's not changing. There's no gaming with it. So we're looking at, you know, the possibility of that. So again, I'm meeting with Dennis. We have a meeting set up to kind of sit down and investigate and see what other options are out there for us. So we just wanted to put that out there just to let you know that's what we're looking at. But our biggest request would be that addition of kindergarten and first grade for computer literacy. Thank you for considering. We do appreciate your support. Thank you.
As far as recommendations for the FACS program, my middle school classroom definitely needs some new and updated equipment in classroom updating. And to round, I mentioned that my classroom may be part of the first floor, so that makes me very happy. And I'll start doing some research as Hamburg just went through a remodel a few years ago to start looking into that. And then the other thing as far as recommendations is really to continue the Zello Career Program. I'm really happy with the program that's being used and ultimately really develop it into a full like K through 12 plan. So thank you for your support.
And I'll wrap up this slide with business recommendations. And our biggest thing is really just a continuation of business and computer education from the fifth through eighth grade. Especially in the digital age that we are in and enhanced emphasis on digital literacy is vital, I think, for our students. And again, as been previously mentioned, there is a high, high, high demand for a coding software. There's a lot of student interest in it, not only at the middle school and high school level, but also as a possible career path. So I did a little bit of investigating with Dennis and we found a couple of coding software programs that are utilized by neighboring districts. I've looked around a few of them and both of them look, you know, very much around what we're looking for, age-appropriate. So for the sake of time, I'll let you kind of click around those at your own discretion. But I want to thank you for your time and for your attention and I will pass it off to Lisa.
So up at the high school, two recommendations that I have is to require a future financial planning course for all high school students to participate in. So as a graduation requirement, this is, this would be a half-year elective. Future financial planning focuses on the students having the understanding, especially after they are starting to work and they're going through these college packages. For example, understanding what the payback will be, the college loan repayment process, budgeting, banking, understanding how to appropriately use their credit cards, making sure that they are paying off these credit cards, they're not swamped in debt. And then, of course, having those loans, making some really smart financial choices and decisions. It is a class that I really, really feel, and actually, some other districts are also, you know, considering this opportunity and have already started implementing this. So something I would really love for you all to consider and I'd be happy to speak more about that, you know, some of the classwork, et cetera. Just a suggestion, I know that there has been talk of some other potential senior-level courses as mandates, Health and Society, I know, has been on the table. So this could actually be a really great half-year, half-year, maybe an every-other-day opportunity where the students could have this fantastic, you know, basically this culmination before they exit our high school with those skill sets. Just another thing that kind of lives in my pipe dreams of what I really would love to see is a career development center. I'm very passionate about all of that human resource aspect, you know, the resume development, career, cover letters, those interviewing, the mock, the mock interviews, as I mentioned, helping students align some job shadows. I do internships. A lot of times, students can't find the time to fill that in the schedule. So I see this career development center as an opportunity to kind of blend and marry a lot of these really wonderful aspects of what we do at the high school and to make it more available for all students. We have so many wonderful programs up at the high school. A lot of times, students have to choose this or that. And I see this as an opportunity for them to be more of like appointment-based, where they'd be able to work with someone, again, CTE business certified, that would be able to help them navigate that process with the resume development, that sort of thing. So just two ideas that I, you know, again, could really blend a lot of nice attributes of our program. Thank you again so much. This is all of our contact information. We are all incredibly passionate about what we teach and we really thank you for your time. If you do have any questions, follow-up, anything in particular for each of us, you know, we welcome that and we really appreciate all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Marquely, Ms. Parker, Mr. Frankowski, and Ms. Kaminski. Really great to see all of you. And thank you for giving us such a good and thorough peek into what you all do every day. It was really great to see it. An initial question, point of clarification. Go ahead, Mr. Blowers.
Thank you. When I hear reports like this, you know, there are reasons why I was such a successful school district. The report was very impressive in all the areas presented. Use the word life skills, things that they carry, students will carry with them when they leave the doors here and move on. It's a, it's just a credit to the program you put together and certainly thank you for your time and efforts tonight. But very impressive, very happy with that.
Yeah, I'll echo that and say that I appreciate your approach to this is it not being something that we're just in a stagnant mode, but you're looking forward to what's, what's coming in the future and what's going to benefit the kids coming through the classes now the most down the road. So, so I do have, I have a couple of questions for you. And the, so the interest in coding, I think, is fantastic. And I, you know, fully support you're looking for some, some, some coding software to continue that on for the kids. Has there anybody, has there been any talk about, about putting it together in club format and giving the kids the option to collaborate like that and possibly attend hackathons?
The first thing we need to do, I think, before we can even look at that is really find a software that actually fits our needs so that we then know where to go from there. We want to make sure that the software is compatible and appropriate as well as safe and meeting our ED Law 2D requirements. I know that I've worked with Scratch in the past with Boost and it was very public. So we want to make sure that our kids are protected first. And I think once we have that tool, then we might be able to look at some things. Currently, Parkdale does not have clubs, so I know we can't do that, but I know middle school has some other options that they could do. But I think our first goal is all of us are really just researching what tools do we have? Because once we have that tool, then we feel comfortable and we can start planning things. So I think we're at that beginning stage, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. And thinking about the, the project management and the project-based learning that you, that you have going on, and thinking about things that are coming for these kids that are going to be relatively standard for them as they enter the business world. I think a lot about design thinking and, and that approach to, to problem-solving and collaborating. And, you know, as Mr. Frankowski was talking about, the one project to, to come up with a product. You know, I see, I see that as an opportunity to introduce the kids to a collaborative iterative process where they're, they're going through that and they're doing ideations and they're, and they're coming back. And, and they're looking to really work as a team and provide the best possible solution. Is that something, is that an approach that you're taking today or considering and would see it continue on through, through the classes as they get up through high school?
I guess, thank you for the question. I could, I guess I should have clarified a little more. That project was a collaborative effort where students each had to kind of supply their own idea and then they work together to kind of go back to the drawing board and work on the best design and best overall idea, kind of find that flow. So we are trying to institute that collaborative design feel. When it comes to incorporating that design on a project-based level, we are trying to incorporate it at every age group. It's just, it's definitely a process to work to get to that point.
Sure.
So it is definitely, we're, that is the goal. We are working towards it and we are trying to grow with that every single day.
Yeah, in my mind, it would be great to see that become, you know, get to the point where, you know, design theory becomes a, a class, an elective at the high school level for, for kids who are going to be, you know, going on to college. Last one I'll ask you is on Zello. So I had, I had our eighth grader show us his Zello dashboard and walk me through it because he's two weeks into that now. So I could understand a little bit more. And I watched the, the, I think there was a video included in a presentation that we had. And I love that. I love that idea of starting the kids early on, on helping them to sort of learn about themselves through, through these programs and then retake these quizzes and see how that changes and see what sticks and what doesn't. And I know that this year, I believe, the counseling center at the high school is implementing MyA Learning, which is the same, my understanding, the same concept and the same sort of tool. How, has there been talk about how those two different programs can talk to each other? Can the information that the kids build in the middle school level be then transferred to MyA Learning? Or is there a plan to possibly move to a single platform?
So it's interesting. We have traditionally used a program called Career Cruising and that was being used for a long time. Excuse me. And I started to feel like it was a little bit outdated. And then I learned that they had updated and changed the platform and you could move into the Zello platform. So I really initially was looking at it to support my curriculum. And it's interesting that you bring up the MyA Learning because the counselors were just in my classroom this week and we were having a discussion about it and they were seeing, they were exploring that program. I looked into the MyA Learning initially. What I really, it seems definitely more high school-based or high school-focused. I did let the counselors know in their initial research. I went into Zello. Zello does link to the common application as well and they also go all the way down to the elementary level, which I'm not quite sure that MyA Learning does. I do think ideally it would be wonderful to all be on the same platform because then students are moving from grade level to grade level and have access to that same information and can each year reevaluate it based on their new experiences and things like that. So I did give the high school counselors the information. They do have access to look at Zello as well. So I think that's something to continue discussing further and we probably warrant a meeting as well with the counselors of the district.
Yeah, that's great. And I guess at the very least, I would encourage that we try to find a way to get the Zello data into MyA Learning as much as possible so that those kids have that continuum that's being created today. So thank you very much. I really appreciate this presentation.
Thank you.
I just want to say I love the project-based approach. I have a third-grade grandson and I meet each day when he gets off the bus. And one of the things I say to him is, tell me something that was fun today. And inevitably, he hears something. He's never had a loss for words. Must be like grandma. But at any rate, one of the comments that he made the other day was that they were exploring together in their group, the Olympics. And he was having so much fun. And I said, well, I think it was Friday. And he said, he said to me, I said, well, what are you going to do over the weekend? Oh, I'm going to Google Meet with my friend and we're going to work on the project. It just is wonderful to see that happening now. And the other thought I had was I really hope the high school does take up the credit for the finance-based learning because, boy, that's needed. These kids need to know what, what that's going to cost them down the road. There's so much, so much finance, financial problems out there with the student loans right now and so on. It just, that would be a blessing.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much for this presentation. It was really wonderful. When I went through it yesterday and read it, I was ecstatic to see something for recommendations. For instance, adding computer literacy in K through 1. That would be such a great addition because we know that these kids are on computers way before kindergarten. So I just think that that would be a huge, huge help. Middle school, splitting the fifth grade for the 20 weeks into the sixth grade. So it's 10 and 10. I mean, right now, there's this gap. There's nothing in sixth grade. So to me, it makes sense to switch it. So it's, it's half and half of every grade in middle school would have something with business. High school, for all the mandates that New York State gives us, I still cannot believe that there's no mandate for a class like financial planning or financial literacy. Because to me, that is the one thing that is missing for every graduating senior going into the real world, whether they're going into the workforce, whether they're going into a trade or whether they're going to college. Every single graduating senior needs to know financial literacy. And it's something that, like I said, I was thrilled when I saw this. And I really hope that this, this one in particular comes to fruition because it's something that I think every, every senior needs to have. And the Career Development Center, that ties in so much with the Counseling Center, with what they're doing for these students who are, who are trying to apply to colleges and have these interviews. I had a parent say to me last Tuesday, her daughter's graduated a year and a half ago and she said, the one question that she does not still know how to answer, whether it was applying for colleges, whether it's for internships, employees, employers, whatever, is tell me about yourself. And, and that's something that as an adult, we're like, well, okay. But as a 17 and 18-year-old, you don't know that answer. So to me, this Career Development Center, that's something that they could really help them with things like that that may be simple to us, but not to them at that age. So I really was happy with your recommendations and I hope a lot of them are able to come to fruition.